This meeting is called to water. This is the August 9th meeting of the Board's Selectmen. They have a motion to approve the payrolls, bills, and warrants.
So moved. Second.
There we have motion in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. So voted. Motion to approve the minutes of the July 26th meeting.
Move approval? Second.
Any further comments? If any, none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, or voted?
Mr. Chairman, I was going to abstain because I wasn't here.
Oh, okay. So we have four yes and one abstention. Item three is announcements and reports. Mr. Misakar, do you have anything to report on the strategic plan, community feedback?
Yeah, so there's two additional planned feedback sessions tomorrow, Wednesday, at the farmer's market, and Thursday at the food trucks. Both events here at the town hall, one by the senior center, one on the front lawn. We've, you know, had great engagement with well over 100 residents at this point, and we appreciate everyone's participation thus far, and just encourage others to come out those final two events. On Thursday at the farmer's market, we're also going to have representatives from UMass that are doing the strategic communications plan onsite to talk with some residents about where they receive their information from the town and how we can make improvements on that. So it's a couple of different nuances, and we're just looking for feedback from residents to continue.
Okay. We don't have any other announcements in the book. Does anybody have anything? Okay. Item five is a public comment. We don't have anybody on that.
I just have a couple of things on the town manager's report if I could.
Oh, did I skip that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I crossed off COVID and crossed off town manager's report. Okay, sorry.
All right.
Next item is town manager's report.
Just a preliminary heads up to the board that at your next meeting on August 23rd, we will be recommending that we set a special town meeting date for October 17th, and we look forward to working with the board through that. And then, one additional update on the climate action plan. We've had over 60 individuals and firms pull down the RFP for the climate action plan. And last week, we held a pre-proposal meeting, and 20 different firms participated in that. So I'm really encouraged about the number of interested firms and individuals responding to that request for proposal. Also, the multimodal transportation study is out on the street, and we'll be having a pre-proposal conference for that next week. So we are moving those two town meeting initiatives forward.
Good. Okay. Back to public comment. We don't have anyone this evening participating in that. We actually did have somebody who was interested, but the topic seemed like it was more appropriate to have a discussion in a meeting, as a regular scheduled meeting, so I think they're going to come in on the 23rd. Next order of business is a virtual meeting with Attorney John Meridian on behalf of Burton's Grill of Shrewsbury LLC. Can we have them?
My name is Greg Demakis. I'm here on behalf of John Meridian. We work in the same law firm.
Okay. Good evening.
Good evening. And he's actually doing another one of these in Westfield.
Whoops.
Oh, no.
What happened? Hold on a second. What happened?
Mark, the SMC, they left the meeting.
What?
SMC clicked out of the meeting.
They left the hangout. They left the meeting. SMC.
Oh, they left the meeting? Can he hear us? No?
No.
Oh. Okay. Technical difficulties. You can't go to a commercial either, like the network, so we'll just wait.
Now we get to see Mark's password now?
Yeah, right. There we go.
Then outside of Massachusetts.
Excuse me. We could see you speaking, but we couldn't hear you because we lost the connection on this end.
Okay.
So I think we left you where you said your colleague was out in Westfield.
Okay. He's out somewhere.
All right.
So I represent Burton's Grill of Shrewsbury LLC. The Burton's Grill chain, Burton's Grill LLC is the sole member of 11 LLCs in Massachusetts and 11 LLCs outside of Massachusetts, which operate seven Burton's Grill restaurants in Massachusetts and four Ready Tavern restaurants in Massachusetts, and 11 Burton's Grills outside of Massachusetts. And at the parent level, there's going to be a transfer. So the individuals, so in Burton's Grill of Shrewsbury LLC, the sole member is Burton's Grill LLC. And the members in Burton Grill's LLC are selling their membership interest to another LLC called Burton Grill Holdings LLC. And then there's two LLCs. One of them's a big equity fund, which will be the owners of that LLC. Everything else remains the same on the licensee level. The manager on the license remains the same, the hours remain the same, the training remains the same, the format of the business remains the same, and the managers on the LLC remain the same. What is changing? Excuse me. What we are adding, two more members, two more managers, Anthony Ackel and Mitchell Kahn. They were the new group, and we're adding them as members on the LLC. So what we're asking you to do, and this is part of, as I said, this is a big transfer. This is a part of a 22, you know, unit chain transfer. And as you see in your package, because of the size of this transfer, we went to the ABCC first and never approved it. And there should be a letter in your package from Ralph Sacramone saying that they reviewed it at the ABCC, and everything is in order. So what we're asking tonight is for you to approve the amendment of the application to allow for the transfer of the membership interest at the parent level and to add the change of members, managers on the licensee by adding Anthony Ackel and Mitchell Kahn. And we submitted queries for them. I think you should have everything in your package.
Okay. And the change of ownership interest to the Section 12 All Alcohol Restaurant License?
Right. In other words, right, the sole owner of that licensee now is going to be, instead of Burton's Grill, Burton's Grill LLC will remain the sole owner, but the members in the parent will now be changed from the individuals to this Burton Grill Holdings LLC.
Okay. Burton Grill Holdings. Okay. Okay. Any questions? No? Okay.
It's pretty straightforward.
What's the pressure of the board?
So, this is just a meeting, not a hearing, so I'm going to move that we approve Burton's Grill of Shrewsbury LLC DBA Burton's Grill and Bars application for a change of LLC managers and change of ownership interest to its Section 12 All Alcohol Restaurant License. Second.
Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Okay. I think we're all set.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Take care.
Bye.
Okay. The next order of business is a meeting with Rowan McAllister, Assistant Town Planner, to discuss affordable housing in Chapter B in Shrewsbury. Ms. McAllister is going to go over Chapter 40B of the law, how it works, all the intricacies of it for us, and see if I'm confused or confused.
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, if I could, so just provide a little bit of overview before Ms. McAllister starts. So, as the board is well aware, and members of the public that have watched meetings or seen what's going on in town, there's a lot of development that's occurring. There's a lot of interest in multifamily housing within the community. Some of that development is coming to us by way of the state's Chapter 40B process, which Rowan will get into some details on. But there's a lot of, I think, just general uncertainty and questions surrounding that, what the town can't do, what the town can do, what the town should do, what the town shouldn't do, what are the benefits, what are the disadvantages of these types of projects. So, given, you know, we have the project potentially at 409 South Street and off Route 20 at Stony Hill, we just thought this is a great opportunity to kind of level set things, talk about 40B process in general, where we are with our affordable housing percentages, what paths do we see forward, and how we work with these type of developers to have the best outcomes for the community. So I'll turn it over to Rowan.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Misakar, members of the board. So, yes, I'll just walk through my memo, and then I'd be happy to answer questions. So essentially, to start it off, Chapter 40B is a state law, I think enacted in the 1960s, and it essentially requires that municipalities work with developers to construct low or moderate income housing. And it does this by creating a unique permitting process, which is a comprehensive permit. And that permit essentially fast-tracks the review process, consolidating what would usually be multiple board reviews into only a ZBA review under this comprehensive permit. Notably, it also limits the municipality's ability to deny or significantly modify one of these proposals. So, however, I guess, and why this memo is in front of you is you, as the board, asked in what ways can the town protect itself and give itself the ability to deny these proposals? And within this state law is also something called a safe harbor threshold. So essentially, this safe harbor, if towns can achieve it, gives a municipality the ability to deny or modify a proposal where it otherwise couldn't. So the main and most common type of safe harbor threshold that's in Chapter 40B is the 10% threshold, which is essentially met when a municipality can show, DHCD in particular, that 10% of its total housing stock is made up of affordable units. So in Shrewsbury, we do not meet that level or that threshold. Currently, we have 893 affordable units in town, and our 10% using our year-round housing data from 2010 is 499 units. Now, we also have numbers for 2020 that are preliminary that bumps it up to 1,472 units. So that, those two numbers are basically our 10% threshold, and again, we're not meeting those right now. So I've outlined in my memo the multiple types of safe harbor thresholds that Shrewsbury may be able to meet, and I can go through sort of my proposed timeline for how the board might anticipate meeting a temporary threshold and then continuing on to achieve that 10% threshold. But I also kind of want to stop and share kind of my opinion as the planner, assistant town planner here is, I want to emphasize that I do think a comprehensive permit is an important and effective tool in creating affordable housing. So I don't really want that to get lost in our conversation around these safe harbor measures. And you can see in my memo that I've included a number of times where I want to encourage the board to consider to continue to approve and construct affordable housing even if safe harbor is achieved. And we can get into why that might be a strategic method for the town to enact. So, Chair, Mr. Chair, can I go into my timeline a little bit? Or do you have questions? No? All right.
I have one. Just so I wonder if before you go into the timeline, if we shouldn't talk about what the temporary safe harbor options are?
Sure.
Would that be all right? Because the people are following along in the public, they might wonder, what are they?
Sure. Yes. It's just so technical that I can keep it kind of high level, but yeah, these temporary, there's a number of temporary safe harbors that I looked into, and these are usually one-year, maybe two-year safe harbors. The two that I've outlined in my memo that Shrewsbury may be able to meet is, the first is a compliance with our housing production plan. So you'll see in my memo here, but I'll say it out loud anyway. Because we have a housing production plan, we are able to, in compliance with that, demonstrate that we've built either a 0.5% increase or a 1% increase in our affordable housing stock, and that would correspond to a one- or two-year safe harbor respectively.
Over what period of time? We increased it over what period of time?
If you increased it within, well, could you clarify your question?
You said if we increase it half a percent or 1%. Is there a time period that you have to do that?
Not necessarily. So let's say 409, for instance. Say we approve that or some similar project. We record that, those units with DHCD. We would, it would start our safe harbor at one year once DHCD certifies it. So it could be at any point at which the number of affordable units that we've created adds up to those one or 0.5 percentage.
Well, okay. I thought you were referring strictly to the housing production plan. Okay. I get you.
The, yes. That threshold is what I was referring to. The production, the housing production plan is only valid until about, I think it's 2024.
Okay.
Okay? All right.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question?
Sure.
And regarding that, I think that we know that there are a number of initiatives in town currently, so when is that increase effective? It's when, not when it's planned per se, but when it has been, people are living in it and they're actively active tenants or?
I think I'm understanding your question. On page four, I have the counting affordable units. So this section describes when an affordable unit can count towards that 10% or other thresholds. Is that perhaps what you're getting at?
I think so.
Because in general, it counts starting once the comprehensive permit is approved.
Okay.
So it's not necessarily that someone has to be living in the unit for it to count for the threshold. It's actually at the earliest of the, of those dates.
Thank you.
Okay. I can continue on with the additional temporary safe harbors. So the other, again, temporary safe harbor that I outlined for the board is kind of this recent progress, safe harbor, and that's that a municipality must demonstrate a 2% increase within a 12-month rolling period at the time of a comprehensive permit filing. So this timeline, and maybe Mo, that was your question earlier, that it, that 2% has to be demonstrated within 12 months of the filing of the permit. So in that case, you are bound by a time limit. Okay? So, those are the two. Any other questions about those or others, other thresholds?
So with Hills Farms, then, they had their comprehensive permit approved
Yeah.
a few years ago. They didn't do anything. So that expired. If they take out a permit ever, does it start again? Or is it, they get one, you only count it once?
Yeah. All right. So I will call out that I revised this memo on Monday following an additional conversation with DHCD, actually in reference to that question. So where we landed on the issue is that for the 10% threshold, right, so demonstrating that we have the affordable housing stock, that you can put an affordable development, affordable units on that 10% threshold as early as the comprehensive permit. It'll then fall off of that 10% list if a building permit is not issued within, what is it, 18 months? So that's the case of the point at Hills Farm. It fell off of our, what's called a subsidized housing inventory, which is how you measure that 10%.
Okay.
So that, and I should say, once the permit is issued, it comes back on, and it can still count towards our 10%. But for the temporary, if that's what you'd like me to address, is that no, we only get one bite at that apple in terms of, we had to have filed when it was permitted.
Okay.
And we cannot count it now, once the building permit is permitted, as a housing, a compliance with housing production plan threshold.
Does the town have the option of when they want to use the safe harbor provision? Like, could we have waited until the building permit was issued?
Not for the housing compliant, the housing plan.
No, for the safe harbor.
Well.
It's triggered with the comprehensive permit, the building permit, the occupancy permit?
So the temporary safe harbors?
Yeah.
You have to take it the earliest of the following days?
You have to take it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Hypothetically, a town could wait to put it on your, on the 10%.
But not the safe harbor?
But no, because if you'll see also, you have to record, it specifically says in the temporary safe harbor text that you have to record the calendar year it was permitted. So even in the case of you grant the comprehensive permit in late December, if you don't record it with DHCD in January, it's out. You can't count that. So you have to be on top of it for recording, stuff like that. Yep. All right. All right. And you'll see in Table 1, I kind of summarize the different types of safe harbor. I can go through it, but it's at the leisure of the board. Would you like me to restate some of the safe harbors?
Could you just use the 409 South Street as an example of what would happen if it got permitted?
Sure. So to walk, to reference Table 1, we can walk through each, how it would apply for each. So at 196 units, 409 South Street would add the complete 196 units to that 10% threshold. So in the second column here, I'm showing the difference of what we need to make up to get to that threshold. So we need 579 additional units, or the 409 South Street would subtract 196 units from that threshold, right? Now, the temporary housing production plan compliance states that an increase of 74 or 148 units would create safe harbor, temporary safe harbor thresholds. So in the case of a 196-unit comprehensive permit, I'm proposing that we would qualify for safe harbor under a temporary housing production plan compliance threshold for at least, it should be two years, given the number of units of that development. Okay? And then the recent progress, again, we have to show that we have 295 units, an increase of 295 units. So in the case of 409, that alone wouldn't do it, but say there was another permit that came through, or our inclusionary bylaw and some other projects that we have added up to that within a 12-month period, and we got an application for a comprehensive permit within that time, we could use that, those powers of safe harbor to either deny or substantially modify.
Okay. Does anybody else have any other questions?
Just a comment. Could you speak a little bit more about the point where, that you make in this memo where if we were to deny, it's very likely that a developer would just wait out our safe harbor and come back, and how that would impact our ability to have some sort of say in the development when it comes back?
Yeah. And I appreciate that question because I do think it speaks to what my recommendation ultimately is, is that the town consider a temporary safe harbor if met, just a means, kind of a strategic tool to review comprehensive permit applications. So in the case of any of the temporary ones, even if a developer is denied initially, they can wait out the temporary safe harbor and apply once it's been removed. So what I try to outline here in the memo and in this timeline on Page 6 and in Table 2, is that if the, if the town can achieve safe harbor, let's say through 409 South Street, and we continue to receive comprehensive permits while under safe harbor, it may be to the benefit of the town to entertain those comprehensive permit requests and proposals if it feels in line with the needs of the town, and only use the privileges of safe harbor, again, only temporary safe harbor, for projects that seem wholly undesirable or far outside the needs of the town. And in that way, if we continue to approve while under safe harbor, we'd be able to piggyback using those temporary safe harbors all throughout the next kind of seven years to stay under safe harbor while furthering our affordable housing numbers and total affordable housing stock to make it to that ultimate 10%, and then achieve what's really the true type of safe harbor. Does that make sense? Is there any clarification that I can provide on that?
So when you achieve that true safe harbor, how long does it last?
Great question. So the, it lasts until the total housing stock changes, and that changes every 10 years with the census. So right now, we still don't have the updated 2020 census, and they're not predicting we'll have those until, I think it's March of '23. So we can kind of estimate that we, if we can achieve safe harbor sometime in the next few years, again, at that 10% threshold, we may be able to have it last into the beginning of 20, of the 2030s, and then have to reevaluate once those new total housing numbers are released. So.
It's not, not permanent?
It's not permanent. But again, to go back to this point of thinking of safe harbor as a strategic tool to review applications instead of a means to just deny all of them, you can continue to review and approve comprehensive permits even under that 10% threshold, or I should say, even while you're in, above that 10% threshold, in order to make sure you maintain it when the total housing units increase in 2030. And then, and therefore staying under this sort of safe harbor protections through the census change and that data, housing increase.
I just want to add one, if I had a chance.
So you had mentioned, you know, that you felt with your experience that using temporary safe harbor as a means to deny permits is not a good strategy because they can just wait out the temporary period. So considering, you know, when we are in like a temporary safe harbor, and considering permits at that point would kind of give us more room for negotiation at the table. So because of the way the law is written, we don't have a lot of control over what can happen when we are not meeting those thresholds. So is that, I just want to clarify that that is, it kind of gives us more, a seat at the table with how these projects get developed.
Right. To be under safe harbor, even if it's temporary?
Yeah, to use the temporary safe harbor periods instead of denying the permits to use that, sort of that period as, at, you know, to be able to negotiate how they're developed and how they move forward.
That's my understanding.
Okay.
The one thing I will say, and I brought this, is that when a comprehensive permit is filed, the municipality does have a limited amount of time to claim safe harbor. So if we don't, I think it's 30 days, if we choose not to claim safe harbor within that threat, that time period, we would have to process it like we don't have safe harbor. So there's a limited negotiating period, and it might have to happen on the front end before a ZBA permit is filed, but yes, I think I'm understanding. But yes, I think I'm understanding your question. I just ask.
Um, so, if we have that Thursday, it's 30 days, assuming it's a 30-day window in order to claim safe harbor, if we do claim safe harbor, does that mean that we are not moving forward with it? Or we could still move forward and negotiate the permitting, um, even having claimed temporary safe harbor?
My understanding of the mechanism is that if you were to claim safe harbor once the application has been filed, you're, you're, the municipality is setting itself up to deny or to substantially modify. You wouldn't necessarily, and I don't know, it might be something we could look into for kind of what past cases have happened.
Okay.
Um, but in general, I think the intention would be that you, you would be anticipating a denial.
Okay.
Yes, I mean, I, I, I think one of the other important things to look at is, um, I agree, it gives us a really good strategic position to, like, right now, we ultimately can't say no, but if we're within safe harbor and we want to do our due diligence and negotiate, we do have that stronger hand at the end. The other part of working with a developer through the 40B process that provides an advantage to the town is that, so 40B has the stick of, in some ways compelling the community to accept the housing, but it also has the carrot that, just like 409 South Street, while only 49 of the units are actually affordable, we get credit for 197. So if, if it's a, if it's a housing development that's in residential zoning, and they just end up, you know, developing, you know, 12% affordable units, then we only get the actual units one for one. We don't get the benefit of the, of the rest of the development. So, that does provide an interesting advantage in order to keep us, because as, as you said, Beth, that you ne, you get to 10%, but 10% is only ever really a, a 10-year safe harbor. There's no permanent safe harbor. So, um, the only way you would have permanent safe harbor is if zero new houses were built within that next 10-year period. Otherwise, we're, we're always subject to some additional affordable housing requirements. Obviously, it becomes much more manageable when we get to 10% plus, because, you know, we're going to be looking at that, and our zoning already, multifamilies already requires 12%, so we're kind of getting ahead. But there is that other advantage of the carrot and the stick related to a 40B development where we can take credit for more units that are actually affordable.
Isn't it, I'm not saying we should pay for 40Bs, but I think an, an example is, if we use South Three as an example, 200 units for our numbers, you get to count all of them. The, the apartment complex at Market Basket is not a 40B, and they have 10 or 12 and a half percent, whatever it is, affordable, and they have 250 units.
250 and 25 affordable.
And only, and only the 25 count.
Correct.
Yeah.
Um, and if I remember right, I think we asked them if they were, they were going to build the apartments anyways. I think we asked them if they would, were interested in a 40B, because it would have helped us, and that wasn't their business. They didn't do it. They're going to have the apartments anyways. We wouldn't better off. Um, because they still have the affordable units, just.
Yeah.
If they build, if they build houses, you only count the individual unit.
Absolutely.
Um, I do think it's important that people understand that if we're under that 10%, ultimately, whether we blow it off for a year or not, we really can't say, well, we can fight them. You got chances of, of, of winning in court and getting a denial in court ultimately is about zero. So I guess then there's the issue of, if we're under 10%, do we talk to a developer who's coming in, knowing what, what the circumstances are, and, and look at whether or not we want to do a lip? Because then we've got some negotiating capacity. We could.
And that is, yeah.
Because we could potentially get an agreement to limit the number of apartments, design, the whole nine yards. Or the other way, where it's more adversarial, they're going to come in with whatever, and we're at the mercy of the developer. So, um, I don't think people realize that this is not, you know, letting somebody in.
Mm-hmm.
Even though we need affordable housing, um, it's not letting somebody in. The state says they can come in, and that's it. The safe harbor, it, it, it just pushes it off a little bit, right? Essentially, the temporary safe harbor. That's all it's doing. Um, which is good, because it, it helps you absorb the population increase a little bit easier, but eventually, you're going to get it anyways, theoretically. What happens if using 409 South Street as an example, because now you're going to have an app, an active application? If they're in the application process, and say they're, I don't know how many months it takes to permit it. Say, it takes six months to permit it, and they're in the fifth month, and they don't have their comprehensive permit yet, and somebody else comes in and files. Haven't really started the process yet, but they file, and then month six, 409 gets their permit, comprehensive permit. Without going into all the mechanics, they, we, we register that to go into the safe harbor. But that other project is, is not shut out, right? The one that just started? If, if the thing is already in play, is that still protected in the process?
So.
No, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, I think it would be tight timing, and, and a qualified developer would probably be timing it so that it would fall, as you're suggesting. But I will say, and I'm referencing a, a 40B handbook that I found really helpful, um, from MHP, but we, we do have, I said it's, it's a 30-day window. We have 15 days from the opening of the public hearing to claim, or to, to request a safe harbor determination from DHCD. So in like, in, in your case, if a, if an applicant files and we, and, and at that same hearing, we approve a comprehensive permit and open the hearing of, of another, right? It, it could be that DHCD could get back to us before the 15-day period of the opening of the new one. And I know I'm getting into specifics, but they might be able to certify and, and claim safe harbor. So it's, it's very.
Okay. So make, if somebody's two months in, they might be protected?
Yes, to your point, I, I believe so. So if we can't claim safe harbor within, within the, what's outlined in 40B, we would not have it.
Okay. I don't know if it would happen, but I was just curious.
Yeah.
It's, it's kind of, it's kind of like when you're doing zoning, if somebody already files a subdivision preliminary plan, you make a zone change, they're protected, right?
Can I ask a question, Mr. Chairman?
Okay.
Um, uh, just for the public that may be watching right now, um, I don't know if Mr. Mizikar or Ms. McAllister, um, somebody could explain what a lip is and what, you know, like friendly 40B, and why we might want to approve a permit under those circumstances.
You know, honestly, you've been through it.
Yeah, of course.
You can speak to it.
Yep, so, lip is local initiative program, and it gives us the ability to partner with a developer um, and set some parameters associated with a 40B development. It gives us more of a stake in the process. It gives the developer, the incentive for the developer is their ability to access additional funding and, and priorities, uh, through the state and their program. So, there's incentives for them to do it, there's incentives for us to do it. It gives us more of a seat at the table, rather than kind of sitting back as the board of selection and allowing the ZBA to go through that process.
Right. And maybe agreeing upfront to, to limit the amount of units to maybe design. There's a lot of things you can negotiate.
Yep. So if, if we're in safe harbor and we have a clear ability to say no, the next level of control that we could have down the spectrum, so to speak, is a lip, where we're, we're, uh, agreeing to partner with the developer, so to speak, doesn't mean, you know, it, it means we kind of recognize the fact that the developer can go through this process without us, you know? Um, and it gives us a seat at the table, or you could just, the least level of reviews, you can just take a step back and say, well, they're protected under 40B, let them go to the ZBA and, and come in. So, or, as we've advised in the past, especially at 409 South Street, whatever partnership, control, whatever you want to call it, that we can have with any developer in the town, we're, we're better off, because we know ultimately in the end, they can, uh, apply for that comprehensive permit and will likely get it.
With 409 South Street, they agreed they wouldn't build more than 195 units, right? With the lip.
Yeah, and they agreed to age restrict.
Right.
Yep.
They agreed to that. So they can't change their mind now.
That's correct.
Right. Where, where a developer in a traditional adversary, or whatever you would call it, they could start the process, and they could decide, they could go up or, they could, we're out of the process at that point. It would be in the, not that the ZBA could do too much. They, they, they're limited in what they can do.
They're very limited, yep.
It's more, that's almost site plan approval, right? To a certain extent. Interesting, frustrating process.
Yeah. I just wanted to, you know, clarify, have you clarify that for people that may be watching, that because of the way the law is structured and written, there's not really much control that, that the town has at the Board of Selectmen level or the ZBA level. So, it's, um, it's, that's where, you know, we have benefit when we do agree to those friendly 40Bs, so.
Yeah, and with 409 South Street also led to a development agreement, which led to clear, uh, agreement from the developer to make investments in the public infrastructure before they even got to the ZBA. So it's, it, many advantages to that process.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? I have, I have, um, one, and I, I don't know if I read it in here or something related to 40Bs when I'm reading this, but, um, what's the one on Fruit Tree Call this week?
Sorry?
It used to be Haynes Farm at one point. Fruit, the, the 40B of Fruit Tree.
Oh, uh, she was very common, I believe, or.
I, I don't remember, but you know which one I'm talking, when I'm fruit.
I added it to the moment.
Okay. That, I, that's not really important. I just keep forgetting the name. They changed the name about three times since they put in.
Haynes Farm.
When they, when they, um, there was something else that was started. It was, I don't know, no, it wasn't, I don't remember. They came in and they wanted to, originally, they were going to be affordable until they paid their mortgage off over 20 years. And, and I don't remember the exact circumstances, but I remember we, the town, got them to commit that those are going to be in perpetuity, and we put it in an agreement. And at the end of the 20 years, they tried to get out of it. And we were successful in saying, no, you're not out of it. This is unaffordable. The way the 40Bs work now, at the end of 20 years or 25 years, can they walk away from the affordable units and become all market rate?
I don't think so.
I thought I read some, I, for some reason, I thought I read somewhere that they were allowed to, not, not them.
We can double check, but I don't believe.
I can certainly look into it.
Yeah, I, I was surprised wherever I read it.
Yeah.
It was something in the past two weeks when I was looking at, at this stuff, um, because that's troublesome.
All of our affordable units that I've mentioned are in perpetuity.
Yeah.
So we are, we have no risk of losing the number we have now.
Um, I was just wondering if that was something we negotiated in, or something that the law said they had to do.
Yeah, I can look into it.
Yes.
So, just a comment, um, when I have conversations with people about developments in town, in 40B in particular, there's always this question that comes up as to why doesn't the town stop this, right? And I think, and I'm not sure if you said it at the beginning, but the key about this is that 40B is when someone, not the town, sells a piece of property that isn't zoned residential, and the person, the developer that purchases it decides that they're going to make a residential property, a project, on a piece of land that was zoned otherwise. And that's like, really important to note. So what would the process look like under safe harbor if the town decided to deny once, you know, we have that ability, rather than decide to work with and continue to grow the housing stock?
Sure. Well, I, I've mentioned it a little. I think it's essentially that an applicant would file, right? We would go through that process of the 30-day. We would have to be certified for safe harbor, regardless of whether we've gotten that determination in the past. It's my understanding that with each application, we would need to notify DHCD that we'll be using our safe harbor privileges, right? And then, my, and of course, I, I haven't gone through this process, but I think my understanding is that the zoning board of appeals would deny the comprehensive permit once DHCD certified our safe harbor protections. They would deny it as they could any other permit that comes before them.
Don't you need a reason? What's the reason? Is the reason simply safe harbor?
The, the reason, what I would understand the reason to be is, it would be, and this is from 40B, it's inconsistent with the local needs.
Okay.
Okay? And that's something that has been explored a lot in case law, um, through the, um, Housing Appeals Committee. And that's essentially the mechanism that prevents a municipality from, um, denying it if you're not, if you're not in safe harbor. This, um, it's called, the HAC does not have the authority to, to overturn the decision of a municipality if you are under safe harbor.
So it doesn't, excuse me, follow up, it doesn't send us into a legal situation where we then have to defend our decision to deny a development if we're under safe harbor?
Not in the case of this Housing Appeals Committee, which is what we would usually be held to if we were not in safe harbor.
Okay, thanks.
I'm kidding. I think it's really very.
It's interesting when it's dry.
So that 30-day trigger comes into play with the formal filing to the ZBA, and, and of course, well, historically, we've at least had the opportunity to work with interested parties well in advance of their filing. So 30 days seems like a short amount of time for the board to make a decision. But I would think, if you look at 409 South Street and some other ones, we've had the opportunity to work with developers in good faith over, I don't know, 60, 90, 120 days before they've ever decided to apply, knowing that they didn't even have to. So, I think it's, uh, you know, it's, it's a narrow window of formal, but that would be after, I think, we've exhausted some good informal, good faith conversations with them, under, under most circumstances.
Just to follow, Mrs. Cassavian was talking about, that doesn't necessarily prevent litigation, what it will give us as a defense, right? So, um, I think though, for the developer to go in and start litigating, it wouldn't set the developer in good graces for a long term. I think the, the practicality of it, though, with this, and we saw with the lip as well, is that you're intending to have a long-term relationship with the community. So the business realities would hope that most developers aren't going to come in and go hostile. They're going to look to the, to the lip. I'm not saying that wouldn't happen, but until we get to that, we're subject to the whim of 40B. It's that simple. And the only other thing that I think this also should have us look at is, is we go through strategic pri, uh, priorities and portal housing trust that's building housing stock as well, as we can get towards that 10%, but that's not something that we can go build 400 units on either. So these are all things that, that's one other strategic thing that we can do, but that will be incremental. So, hopefully, the, the realities of good business practice to come in and rattle your litigating swords, it's not the way to endear yourself to a community, but lawyers can, are an interesting group.
No, and, and the benefit to a lip is, you can go and fight some of these things through. If you don't go through the lip, and you're going to lose, and you lose the benefit of what you could have gotten out of the lip. So it's going to cost you money to litigate, and you're getting none of the benefits of what you could get by sitting down. And you're going to get it anyway, so. And of 40B, um, they can go into residential. So, and 40B, they can go into residential zones because residential zone might not allow for apartments.
That's a fair point.
They can go anywhere they want. Unfortunately, they go into places that traditionally aren't even residential, so you lose that commercial property, like you said.
Right. You know, you just said the word benefit too, if I may, and I think sometimes we think of 40B and we think of it negatively, but there are benefits to growing our housing stock. There is a need for affordable housing in the community that's clear in our efforts with the Affordable Housing Trust. There is a demand for over 55 housing, and I understand when the first reaction is our infrastructure is going to be overwhelmed, their schools are going to be overwhelmed. But at the same time, when we enter into these LIP agreements, we get some assistance with the infrastructure improvements and those, that does benefit the town overall. You know, it's, there's two sides to it.
Could you touch on what affordable, I don't know if you have any numbers with you, what affordable is, as opposed to whenever we talk about affordable, people, and it's not that it's bad, but they automatically think low income, which, you know, like people of lower incomes don't need a place to live, but affordable, you're going to be making a pretty decent pay to live in an affordable unit.
That's correct. And unfortunately, I don't have the numbers applicable for Shrewsbury in front of me, but to qualify to live in an affordable unit, you have to be making 80% of the area median income. So you can imagine that's a pretty decent salary.
And it says up to 80%, but the way the rents are structured, you're, you pretty much got to be at 80%.
Yeah.
Because I think you showed me those ones and it's, one of the apartments we looked at, I think you needed to make $50,000 to live in a studio.
Yeah. Yeah. So the pricing of an affordable unit will always be at 30% of 80% of AMI, regardless of what your, the resident is actually making.
Right. And 80% of AMI around here is high.
Yeah.
It, you know, we always say, it's like a teacher, a fireman, it, it's even a stretch to say it's like entry-level job positions. Anyways, you know, people complaining, kids can't afford to live here, and those are the kind of places we have to have, or they're not going to be able to afford to live here unless they're scientists or doctors or high-tech people. Anyways, any other questions? Anybody have any questions that they'd like to go into the follow-up on? Okay. Good. Good. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're on number eight, right?
Yes.
Next order of business. Review and act on one-day beer/wine common victory license request of David Anthony Finlay, St. Mary's Parish, 20 Summer Street for the following events. St. Mary's Family Festival on Friday, September 16th. Saturday, September, oh, different times. September 16th, 5:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Saturday, September 17th, 12:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. And Sunday, September 18th, 12:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. It's pleasure of the board.
Move approval?
Second.
Okay. We have motion second. Any further discussion? If any, none. All who's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post are voted. Item nine is to review an act on proposed amendments to the Board of Selectmen Operational Policy 29, requesting street address changes. The staff had, has made some recommendations to make some changes to the policy, really to clean it up a little bit for the application process. Everybody had a chance to look at it. Are there any questions? If not, would somebody like a motion?
Move approval?
Second.
Okay. We have motion second. All who's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post are voted. Item 10 is to review an act on the updated application for the transfer of license from AG United Incorporated, DBA 711, to Carrick Family, Inc., DBA 711, for Section 15, package store wine and malt beverage license. There was some information that had to be updated after it went to the ABCC. There's nothing substantial. The way, just had to tweak some of the corporate information and stuff like that. It's all in order. It's ready to go, so we don't need another hearing, they just need to make some technical corrections to the...
Okay. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the updated application documents of Carrick Family, Inc., DBA 711's application for a transfer of the Section 15, package store wine and malt beverages license from AG United Incorporated, Inc., DBA 711, as outlined in the Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission Return, Return No Action.
Second.
Okay. We have motion second. Any further discussion? If any, none. All who's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post are voted. Item 11 is to review an act to designate the chief of police the authority to assign specific police officers to polling places pursuant to the Votes Act. The Votes Act changed the law and specific policemen have to be assigned to specific precincts. So the town clerk recommended that the board designate the police chief to be the authority to assign the officers to specific precincts.
Move approval?
Second.
Okay. All who's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post are voted.
Mr. Chairman, just a quick question on that.
Sure.
So was it delegating to the chief or do we have to take a vote on the number of, did we have to, or is it...
The law says there has to be at least one officer at a polling place that has at least, how did it go? It has to be one at at least each polling place. So they, if you have five polling places, there has to be five. It doesn't make any difference if there's two precincts in a polling place.
No, understand, but that's fine.
What?
I just wasn't sure with the memo if we, what we're getting at is that we're voting to the number of police at the polling stations and delegating him the authority that, based on availability, who would be? That's how I was reading it.
Yeah.
Okay. So it's a...
So the chief will assign the individual officer.
Got it.
There'll be one in each place.
It does say subject to availability, but they always have somebody there.
Yeah.
It's just the state line up says you have to, somebody has to assign somebody specifically. I don't know why.
It's something we've always had in practice, though. We've always had officers at polling locations.
I think unfortunately, in some communities, that wasn't the case, and this gives the board of selectmen the authority over designation of police officers if needed requires the board.
Did we vote?
We did.
Okay. Review and act, item 12 is to review an act on the appointment of precinct offices to serve a one-year term expiring on August 31st. Town clerk has applied a list of candidates that she recommends would appoint for a one-year term to expire on August 31st, 2023.
Definitely grateful for all of these people for stepping forward and move approval?
Second.
Yeah. We have motion second. All who's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post are voted. Item 13 is to review an act to authorize the chair to send a letter to the zoning board of appeals regarding 409 South Street comprehensive permit project. I think that's really just to say that we signed the LIP and the development agreement, we support the project, right? Mr. Mizikar?
That's correct.
Okay.
Move approval?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? If any, none. All who's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post are voted. Item 14 is to review an act to authorize the chair to sign an application to Mass Housing Partnership, a technical assistance grant for 409 South Street comprehensive permit project, really just to sign the application.
Move approval?
Second.
Second? Did you say, I'm sorry?
I said second, yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? If any, none. All who's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post are voted. Okay. Down to correspondence. Item 15 is an email dated July 28th from Judge Woodruff, 5122 Avalon Way, document about CDC unpublished data obtained via Freedom of Information, request so noted. Item 16 is an email dated August 2nd, 2022, from High Chief James Boner regarding firefighter awards night, which was this evening at, I'm just having a clock, so noted. Item 17 is an email dated August 2nd from Rowan McAllister, Assistant Town Planner, regarding the 409 South Street comprehensive permit, really information that related to the items up above, so noted. Item 18 is an email dated August 3rd, 2022, from Jacob Furman in Nicole Shen, She'sby High School students, regarding used cooking oil project. That was the item where they originally had asked to come in for a public comment, but is actually interested, interest by the staff looking into this. It's collecting used cooking oil, collecting used cooking oil, which then is burned for fuel, but it also keeps that waste oil out of the sewer system, which helps keep the sewers from getting plugged. And it just seemed like it made more sense to talk to them about the project, and I think the sewer department actually is gathering some information on it, so they'll come in on the 23rd. Item 19 is an email dated August 3rd from Judge Woodruff, 5122 Avalon Way, a document that provided our opportunity. Item 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, our ZBA decisions of July 25th, Emmettie, Inc., for a special permit for property located at 58 Beverly Hill Drive, so noted. Item, special app, a special permit for Thea Fort LeBonte, for property located at 22 Plainfield Ave. Special permit for Richard Luzow for property located at 346 Walnut Street. Special permit for Dustin Stockwell for property located at 73 Lake Street. And a special permit for property locate, for Balo Science for property located at 200 Top Turnpike. And unless I missed one, I might have. Nope, that's it. Is there anything else to come before the board? No concession? If any, none. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All who's in favor?
Aye.
Post are voted. This meeting is adjourned. Good evening. Uh...